I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Trustee Mejia?
Here.
Trustee Palermo?
Here.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli? Trustee Portillo? President Rotis?
Yes.
Justin?
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings at any public body at which business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the Businesses Act, the school business administrator, board secretary has cause notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Jersey Journal, the Administrative Bulletin Board, and the district website. I have no communications this evening, so I'll turn the floor over to the superintendent.
Good evening. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to put forward a moment of silence for one of our ninth grade students from Memorial High School who recently lost his battle with bone cancer after a very courageous and distinguished battle where he was very well, a very popular youngster, where the school had actually set up a global for Jovan where they walked several miles and fundraised in the dead of winter and were thankful for his efforts and help put it together. So can we have a moment of silence at this time for Jovan Carabella who lost his battle with bone cancer? Thank you. The honor young man you would ever need. On the brighter side, at this time, we have several recognitions. I'd like to first acknowledge Rita Little's statement put together by our Assistant Athletic Director. Memorial High School's outstanding athletic program, one of the best in the state, I can attest to that as an executive member of the state athletic association. Rafael Hernandez was named Hudson County Interscholastic Athletic League Runner of the Year after winning the Hudson County Title in the time of 1535. The junior speedster also took home the North Hudson Championship as well as the Garrett Mountain Invitational. Hernandez went on to qualify for the meet of champions, that's the entire state of New Jersey, where he posted in the top sixty results. He was named Hudson County Interscholastic Athletic Runner of the Year. Congratulations go out to his coach Lopez and Coach McCoy. At this time, Rafael, if you could please step forward. Is Rafael here?
He's not here yet.
Okay. Are Rafael? Okay. May I may I have the board president here for a second? The plaque that we're presenting to the Hudson County Runner of the Year Hudson County reads Superintendent Schools John Fauta and the West New York Board of Education proudly honors Rafael Hernandez Memorial High School as Hudson County Runner of the Year December 12, 2014, presented by Steve Rotis, Board President. I'd like to also congratulate Assistant Coach McCoy, Head Coach Julio Lopez, Assistant Athletic Director Myra Burke. The field of athletics and in track, we have another award. This is a very outstanding award. The Boys Indoor Track Sectional State Champions. Now, before I read this, I want to, I know it's in the body of the print, but this is the first time in the history, the illustrious history of Memorial High School and the illustrious history of our track team has many, won many, many championships. Our first state sectional championship, on Saturday, January 31st, 2015, Memorial High School Boys Track Team won the state sectional Group Four, Section One title for the first time in school history at the Bennett Pubo in Tomford. Below are the names of the runners. Rafael Hernandez, Rafael, Calvin Almonte, Jose De La Cruz, Anderson Heredina, Nonasi Cuevas. If you could please come up here to be honored by our board of education. Thank you, Coach Lopez, Coach McCoy, Myra Burke, Athletic Director John Fraccio, and former track star Wayne Cook, who makes him very proud to be in the championship. I'm his track team.
Mr. Fauta, Mr. Burke, I only came to speak my behalf of the kid. If I have one minute, now I'm out of here.
Can you give me a moment?
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the athletic department, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their continuous support of athletics at Memorial High School. And as you, as you may know, we have a tremendous history of athletics and the reason being is because of the constant support that we get from the Board of Ed, the Superintendent of School, the President of the Board of Education. As a matter of fact, Steve, this fall season, has been practically at all our football games at home and he has also been at our soccer games. So when you see him sitting there, alright, he also sits on the bleachers to watch our games in Cove Yellow, Cove Yellow Field. Alright, so please make sure that you're aware that he gets around and is very supportive as well. As well as Mr. Parkinson, he has been at many of our games as well. Alright, so please be aware that they're always supporting us and Superintendent of School, Mr. Fauta, Mr. Fauter as well. Alright, and Ms. Claire, Claire, Clara, I call her Ms. Clara. She's very supportive in everything we, we want to do in athletics. So again, thank you very much to everybody. Good night.
Dress to the Board President.
The board agrees? The board?
Yes.
The board aligns? Okay, yes, yes, Mr. Cook.
Hi, Wayne Cook, 61, 31, Jack. I only came here on behalf of the kid. I'm a crackerfield among my class of seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-one. Mr. Burke is ran at the Morton for a country play tennis team. Go by here to the shop when we were all high school together. I ran with one of the best runners that ever came out of the state of New Jersey and he's my best friend, Mr. Sal Baker, and one of the best high school coaches of all time and I call him the Flying Dutchman. My coach Bob Benzett, former principal at Superintendent School. We have a great run program. Julio Lopez was my high school teammate. Julio Lopez is my friend for forty years. The kids should be commended, the coaching staff should be commended, and the athletic department. Thank you, guys. Great job. Way to go Tigers.
I have another presentation and a person to honor. Is Chin Zhi Lu in the audience? Chin, if you could come forward to the podium. Chin Lu recently, several weeks ago, across the entire state of New Jersey, was one of the award winners in the Emerging Artists Twenty-Seventh Annual High School Art Exhibition, which was held at Kean University. This entailed many, many students throughout the state of New Jersey and she was one of the merit winners. With it carried a cash prize and I'd like to honor her this evening for bringing again credit to Memorial High School, the Studebauer Street, and other fields. We have many, many talented students in West New York, not only in athletics, but in arts, music, unbelievable academics. So, the Board President, Mr. Parkinson, I want to give you the inscription. In recognition of outstanding achievement in art presented, Zhi Lu, earned award-winning Art Administrators of New Jersey, presented by the West New York Board of Education on this date. I'd like to thank Supervisor Osnowitz and our teacher for recommending her and we'd be so disfined. Okay, moving on. I'd also like to mention at this ceremony, I was honored with the Leadership Award for Educational Leadership in the Arts Coast of State of New Jersey Award that was very proudly given that day and it was very heartwarming and to be with such fine students and art administrators that received this award. Moving on, at this time, we have a short presentation by Kerry Colhane. Is Kerry here? Okay. Well Kerry was going to talk about the fashion show benefit that was put on for one of our, two of our teachers' students, I mean that student, child, was suffering from a former cancer. She put on a fashion show that raised a lot more for the look after this and we just wanted to honor her and thank her for her graciousness. So I'll make sure that word gets out to her. At this time, if I can ask the board members to take a seat in the audience. Rita Mendez is going to talk about the early childhood providers and our early childhood program requested the Board of Education.
Good evening, Mr. Fauta, cabinet members or trustees, parents, teachers, and audience. It is a pleasure for me to be here tonight to highlight what makes West New York's Early Childhood Program so successful and special. West New York's program, Preschool Classrooms Spark, involve multiple buildings throughout the district. We have preschool classrooms at two standalone buildings, which are the Early Childhood School and School Four Annex, and we also have classrooms throughout the elementary schools except School Six. The district contracts with preschool providers. At this time, they're listed here. We contract with thirteen providers throughout the town. Our mission is like the districts. Our Early Childhood Program prepares students to be successful in an ever-changing world by helping them become critical thinkers, problem solvers, and respectful citizens of the future. While providing an excellent preschool education, we also provide a safe and nurturing environment that is conducive to meeting the needs of our diverse population. So how do we start? We started approximately fifteen years ago. The district followed the mandates which stated that the daycare centers in the town had to be used as part of the program and that's how we began. We began contracting with providers in the district. The district and the providers presently have to adhere to the preschool education program contract that was developed by the New Jersey Department of Education and all the other mandates. What are the mandates that we have to follow? Our program follows the preschool teaching and learning standards, the preschool program implementation guidelines, the elements of a high-quality preschool program New Jersey Administrative Code, and preschool education program contract. We also have to develop an operational plan. Last school year, we presented a five-year operational plan for the years 2014 through 2019. Every school year, we have to update the operational plan. We did that in December. Presently, we are waiting for the board resolution that is needed for the New Jersey Department of Education to approve our operational plan and the budget for the 2015-2016 school year. What are some of the procedures that we have to follow since we work with the providers, the daycare centers? Well, in order to, and this is both for in district and for out of district, so for the elementary preschool classrooms that we have and for the providers, we have to have a reason why we need to add any new additional classrooms to the district and we have to follow the Administrative Code and the guidelines to prove this. For us, we also have to renew on a yearly basis the contract with the providers and the way we do this is we follow the code and we follow the guidelines. For us to be able to terminate or not renew with the providers, we have to adhere and provide the New Jersey Department of Education with a reason why we're doing this and the providers have a right to dispute their non-renewal termination and also the Department of Education has to approve this. The providers have a budget that they have to follow. The budget, it carries the salaries such as for the directors, teachers, teacher assistants, and other staff. It also covers the supplies and materials that our students use. It goes towards the rent or mortgage payments, the staff benefits, utilities, routine operating expenses, and it's all based on pupil, per pupil cost. Proper allocations are prorated based upon number of former abbott classrooms to private classrooms, we're both former abbott. And the providers have, some providers have private classrooms, so what they receive is prorated based upon how many of our classrooms they have in comparison to their private classrooms. And also, their expenditures are monitored by a fiscal specialist on a monthly basis and audits are also done as part of the monitoring process. Where are we today? We have an excellent program that has been acknowledged by the New Jersey Department of Education and parents. We are used as models for many different programs in states. We had California and Louisiana Department of Education and Legislature come and visit and they went through the providers, they also came to our in-district classrooms where they visited, saw the classroom, the children, working with their teachers, and then they asked us questions about the program and how it works. And hopefully, they will be able to start a program like ours in their states. And also, every year, we have to follow the self-assessment. We have to do a self-assessment that's called the Self-Assessment Validation System and every year, we also send out community surveys to parents to see how we're doing. And here we have some of the, just quick pictures. Here you have a child's work from September and then at the end, you could see how much work the child was able to increase and add more to the picture, add words at the bottom. At the beginning, the teacher was the one that wrote dramatic play and you could see later on, the child was using inventis spelling. And these are just some of our children at the learning centers that we have. And the Early Childhood Program is creating a partnership between school and home, which is key to each student's success. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm very proud of the program and I want to thank all of you for the support that we always receive to make our program so special. Thank you.
Rita's being very modest. Couple of years ago, the state of New Jersey awarded Memorial, excuse me, our Early Childhood Program the second best in the state of New Jersey. The only reason we won number one was like a catch-22. We didn't have enough playground space and we can't have enough playground space because we have no space in West New York because we're urban city. That's it. We had people come, Arnold Schwarzenegger, the governor, sent a contingent from California. Recently, we had people from all parts of the country, New Orleans, come and so forth to visit our early program. And I want to personally thank Rita and her staff for what she has done for this program. One of the best in the state of New Jersey. Thank you, Rita. Okay, at this time, I see Kerry Colhane has arrived in the audience. Kerry, if you please step up to the right and we wanted to recognize you for your efforts in your fashion show for little Luke. If you could make a presentation to our board and we would thank you very much.
Hi, thank you again for the fashion show, allowing us to have it, and Adam and Steve for showing up and supporting the kids. We raised about $5,000. We gave 500 of that to Jovan, the boy who just died, to his mother to help him with some of the costs and the rest of it went to the Abadessa family. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. That was an extremely noble effort.
Hopefully, we get to do another fashion show next year for kidney cause.
Absolutely. But I mean Kerry took this bull by the horn and she persisted, was persistent with myself and she pushed for this young little child and fell and unfortunately, we lost, but Kerry, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was very nice activity for the students that were participating, either behind the scenes or on the set, models. They had a very good time.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
At this time, I will give up the floor to our Board Counselor to issue the OFAC Report, Office of Physical Accountability and Compliance Report.
Thank you.
Counselor?
The Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance, which is usually called OFAC, is the investigatory arm of the Department of Education. And whenever the department has a reason to be concerned about something or whenever the office receives a citizen complaint, it investigates and issues a report. The law requires that when a district receives a report from OFAC, that at its next public meeting, it advise the public of the substance of the report and the fact that it was received. And if a corrective action is required, and you will hear in a moment that there is a corrective action required, that must take place within thirty days of the board meeting. So the board received a, a report from OFAC by cover letter dated January 26, 2015. This is the next public board meeting after that. The report deals with a rather technical issue and I will get into the substance, but let me try to put it in context for the public and for the board members who might not be so familiar with it. There are a number of different ways that contracts for goods or services may be procured under the public school contracting laws. One way is a simple bid and bids, as you probably all know, go to the lowest responsible bidder. A couple of other ways are the award of a professional service contract when the board hires a lawyer like myself or a CPA, that's a, or an architect, that's a professional service because we fit within the statutory definition of a professional service. And there is another category of service, which isn't quite a service that can simply be awarded to the lowest bidder on price because it has some evaluation by the board required, but it isn't quite a professional service either within the definition in the statute and that's called an extraordinary unspecifiable service, only in New Jersey, an EUS, an extraordinary unspecifiable service. And that is usually procured by a board going out on what is known as an RFP, Request for Proposals, receiving proposals, evaluating them, and then awarding them as an extraordinary unspecifiable service. And there are some requirements under the law that go along with that in terms of notice to the public and publication of the award after it's made. The report that was received by the district on January 26th deals with a contract award from July of 2014 for an insurance broker service. The board had at one point in time hired or awarded a contract to The board had, at one point in time, hired or awarded a contract to Brown &amp; Brown, an insurance broker, and in July, decided instead to award that contract to Alamo Insurance Group. The issue being examined by OFAC is not whether the board did or didn't have the right to switch insurance brokers. That's not an issue here. What's at issue here is the form of the award, the July award. The July award was made as a professional service, but in point of fact, the awarding of an insurance broker's contract does not qualify as a professional service, and the award should have been made as an extraordinary unspecifiable service rather than a professional service. I'm going to read to you the two operative paragraphs of the conclusion of OFAC. Based on the review conducted, the OFAC has determined the solicitation and award of contract for health insurance broker was not in conformance with the provisions of the Public School Contracting Law. Although the board initially indicated the intent to use competitive contracting, it thereafter sought RFPs for a general liability insurance broker slash health insurance broker. An authorizing resolution then incorrectly indicated that the district publicly solicited an RFQ. An RFQ is a request for quotes, and RFP is a request for proposals. And awarded the contract under the Public School Contracting Law exemption for professional services, then quotes the statute by number. As defined under the Public School Contracting Law, insurance brokerage services do not qualify as a professional service. Instead, the statute authorizes a Board of Education to award a contract for insurance, including the purchase of insurance coverage and consultant services in excess of the bid threshold, provided the award is issued in accordance with the provisions of the EUS exemption of the Public School Contracting Law. Now, there is no financial penalty associated with this. All that is required here is that the board, in the next 30 days, develop a corrective action plan to make sure that this confusion doesn't happen again. So obviously, and if you were to read the entire report, the report is quite clear that the language was developed by the then attorneys for the board in consultation with the administration. It's not up to the board members here to know, evaluate, or decide what the language of the resolution should be in terms of the section of the Public Contracting Law, and they are entitled, as board members, to rely on the advice they receive. This is a technicality in which OFAC is correct, and I'm sure that the administration will develop a corrective action plan so that this doesn't happen again. It was a no harm, no foul problem in that there is no financial penalty.
Mr. Elsie, Mr. Rotis?
I'm told the correction action plan's already done, so I guess it'll be actuated.
Yes. Mr.?
Well, it's a public resolution, so yes, we'll make the corrective action plan public.
Mr. Elsie, Mr. Rotis, I believe we're supposed to have a discussion about this?
You're certainly entitled to have a discussion about it.
Okay. I'd like to share with the board some information. I have 10 copies of this, so if you just pass this along for the board members, I guess there's one copy that can be shared. And there's another copy coming over. I'll wait till everyone gets a copy first.
out, let me make sure that you understand something, although I imagine you do. The wisdom of the change in brokers, or the finances of the change in brokers, is not a topic of this report. The OFAC report deals with one thing and one thing only, which is whether there was a misnomer of the contract as a professional service contract instead of an EUS. I wasn't around at the time, but I can read the report, and that's what it says. If you wish to get into a discussion of the merits of who the insurance broker should be or what the costs associated with that are, that's an appropriate discussion, but not in this context.
I disagree with you, Mr. Elsie.
Good. Well, the fact of the matter is that it's my job, not yours, to evaluate that.
Right, but well, I'd like to point out a specific section.
May I finish what I'm saying, please? It's my job, not yours, to evaluate that. And I'm telling you that the content, the substance of the decision is in appropriate board discussion, but not in the context of the OFAC report. So you can do this at another time, but it's not discussion of the report.
May I speak now?
Not as far as I'm concerned, but that's up to the board president.
If it's regarding the OFAC report, then yes.
It is, and I'd like to point out, I can point out the section as well.
If it's in regards to the OFAC report in particular, that only?
Yes. So on page, on page three, in the third paragraph, in the last line, page three of the OFAC report, in the third paragraph, in the final sentence. And this is, excuse me. The third page of the OFAC report, it says page three.
I know what the third page would be.
In the third paragraph, if you exclude the italics, the last sentence, or the last paragraph, I think it's the operable discussion segue. It says, "The amount of the award was listed as percentage premium and no cost to the board." So I'd like to speak to that.
Well, you're wrong, Mr. Chang. The report certainly does give the background history, but that's not what the report is about. You have to read the conclusions of the report to know what the topic of the report is.
Mr. Elsie, may I speak?
Again, if it were up to me, the answer is no, because you're not speaking about the conclusions of the report.
Mr. Elsie, again, the reason- You have an opportunity to speak during board member comments, but again, if it's not regarding this report, then let's just wait for board member comments.
It is, it is in regards to this report. We are, so he was to have a public discussion about this report.
Right now, that is currently advising us and letting us know that this, you know, so far, the two things you've mentioned has nothing to do with the report.
It does have to do with the report.
So let's just wait for board member comments, I'm sorry.
I disagree.
We're going to continue with the agenda, and we'll wait for board member comments.
I'm not sure why we're afraid to discuss this when this is probably our district's largest contract, in fact.
The remainder of my monthly reports, employee, student accidents, bullying, nurses' reports, and the moral reports are only filed central rules and recorded if necessary, if you need to see them. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, at this time, the board will recess to executive session. I need a motion. The public portion of the meeting is now concluded. The board will now recess to executive session to discuss items which fall within an exception of our open public meetings policy. It permits the board to have private discussions since it deals with specific exceptions contained in New Jersey statutes annotated 10:4-12B. This evening, the board will be discussing matters of personnel affecting current or prospective employees and matters of litigation affecting contract negotiations for employee contracts. Be it resolved with the Board of Education.
Before we go into executive session, board members, so I'd like to say a couple of words for our superintendent, John Fouda's award.
Good evening, everyone, and I would just like to comment at this time, before we leave the stage, with regard to the award that was given to Mr. Fouda as superintendent and as a school leader. That is a very, very difficult award to get, and I want to share with you that we, not only as a board, but the community, should be proud, because it's not easy in the state of New Jersey to be awarded a leadership role for someone in that position. And John, you've just quietly stated it, and you said that you received one, but I'd like everyone to know, we all should be proud and give it our all.
It's easy to be a leader in this wonderful, wonderful school district, because the wonderful teachers, board members, administrators make my job so easy that I accepted that award, and I stated it at the ceremony, on behalf of the West New York School District and its fine staff. Thank you.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education will now recess to executive session to discuss the aforementioned matters. Any discussion held by the board which may not remain confidential will be made public as soon as practical minutes of the executive session. While these goes, utility for confidentiality no longer exists. The board may take action on these items following the executive session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Mejia.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hannah Parkinson.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pesutelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Yes.
Recession now to executive session.
Motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Parkinson?
And a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Mejia. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
President.
This is to-
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pesutelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
Okay. The, at this point, we'll review, the board has requested that the assistant superintendents review the items on the agenda, so I'll go first, and just heads up, except for personnel, it's not necessary. Is, is Ms. Olivero still here?
Sanchez is out ill today.
Okay, I'll go remind, and I guess John and I will try our best on Roberts and Stacey's. 1.1 is the Treasury School Money Report for the month of December. 1.2 is the approval of the minutes for, I think it's November, Decembers, and Januaries board meetings. 1.3 is the paid bill of list of checks that we wrote in the last month. 1.4 are budget transfers. 1.5 is permission by the board to allow me to, oh, I'm sorry. 1.5 is the OFAC report, which was discussed by the board solicitor, and the corrective action plan for that. 1.6 is Concordia Learning Center. That is a special ed tuition-based school that we send students to, and if they get a certain percentage of the school districts, to say that the students can get free or reduced lunch, or can get lunch free, then the students don't have to pay for their lunch. And that's what, that's what's requested by Concordia to do that. 1.7 is to authorize the purchase of copyrighted proprietary software, which is the Office Suite, I think it was the Windows Office Suite for Microsoft Office Suite, is what it was. 1.8 is the spring athletic bid for the athletic department, that's like track stuff, like uniforms and things like that. 1.9 is permission for the junior class to, for them to have their annual prom, instead of having a prom, having a dinner dance cruise with Spirit Cruises on May 28th. 1.10 is to authorize the board secretary to seek competitive contracting for grant writing.
Mr. Fritsch?
Yes.
Yes, you may move on. I'm just wondering, why are we using competitive contract grant writing? I don't believe we've done this before. So I was just wondering why.
Yeah. 1.11, one of the, as this board solicitor's talked about before, that in order for a bid to be, to go out to bid or whatever, that for certain things, you have to use certain processes.
Okay.
And since, just like the insurance one, is not considered professional service, because in the state's eyes, when they define professional, it has to be someone who has an extended course of study, so someone like a doctor that goes to college or whatever and goes on, has like a license, like doctors are licensed, CPAs are licensed, they usually have like five years of college study. Insurance brokers don't need, you can just have a high school diploma, you can be a doctor, have a doctorate and be an insurance broker too, but you don't have to, in order to receive an insurance broker's license, you just have to maybe take a 50-hour course and pass a test.
So this is also-
So it's not considered a long course of study. The same thing with grant writers, there is no professional licensing standards, you don't need to have an advanced college degree.
So this is also under EUP then?
Yes.
Okay.
So both those things, 1.10 and 1.11, are kind of the same animal.
Okay.
All right, so I kind of explained both of them. 1.12 has been a carryover, I think this might be the third month or the second month, is the early childhood providers, what we've been paying them for their contract amounts for this year, which is based on the per pupil costs. And 1.13, as you had the presentation earlier this evening, is the Early Childhood Five-Year Operational Plan. It's the update for the 215, 216 school year. I'll try to do Ms. Olivero as best I can.
Oh, Mr. Fritsch, I just want to go back to the ones again. So for number 1.5 with the OFAC report, as far as the corrective action plan goes, I would like to suggest, as with the 2013 OFAC report, that since it was mentioned in the OFAC report, that board members will abide by the School Ethics Act, that this also be included as well in the corrective action plan.
The corrective action plan has to address the item that the state found, like they told, in the report, they tell you what's wrong, and you have to respond how you're going to correct that wrong thing or things. In this case, they only made one comment, so it has to address that one thing, the corrective action, which it did. And if you look at, the corrective action plan is attached to item 1.5.
Yeah.
And the item that they complained about was that the district will comply with the applicable provisions of the Public School Contract Law when awarding insurance broker service contracts. And in order to respond to that, that's on the agenda, that's item 1.11, use of competitive contracting. Does that satisfy that?
Okay.
That comment by the state.
And then as far as 1.11 goes, I have some questions about the competitive contracting process that we're going to use. So can I ask some questions? Okay. Yeah. So, you know, previously, I had passed out at the beginning of the meeting with regards to the OFAC report. You know, what I thought was really important in the OFAC report, through this process that we went through last year with the former board and now with this current board, is that in fact, the board never knew how much it was paying in premiums and commissions. And I think this is an important thing for the board to know when it makes its decision. I think this is why we got into trouble in the first place, because none of us knew how much we were spending. If you look at the sheet that I provided to everybody, it's the commission, it's the premium and commission analysis for the last three years. We're spending over $200,000 per year just on the commissions. You know, one thing I'd like to suggest that I've seen in other boards is that- You know, one thing I'd like to suggest that I've seen in other boards is that, you know, perhaps we can consider having an in-house insurance, someone to take care of the insurance since we're spending $200,000 a year on this. Or we can do it simultaneously while we do competitive contracting and see where we can get the better deal. You know, my concern with the competitive contracting is that I think that the next time this board sees these proposals from the firms, I'd really like to see what the premiums are going to be, as well as what the commissions are. Because last time, we were just given between 1,500 pages from three responding companies, and nowhere in it did it say how much we were paying in premiums and commissions. So I don't know if we would specify that, would we put this out for bid? But that's really something I'd like to see when we get this back, they say explicitly, this is our quote for the premiums, and this is how much the commissions would be. That way, we can evaluate the proposals coming back. Because last time, I really thought, there was no way for us to evaluate how much it was going to cost, and I think that's really where we got into a lot of trouble with.
Yes, moving on. If there are any other questions on any of the items in finance, I'll move on to... Curriculum is... 2.1 is field trips. 2.2 are fundraisers. 2.3 are travel expenses. 2.4 are speakers. 2.5 is a grant, Captain Planet Foundation grant for gardening program at PS4 Annex. 2.6 is an acceptance of funding for the fruit and vegetables for the Harry L. Bain School. 2.7 is... What did I say? It approves 100th Day canned goods project at Public School Number One. 2.8 are the names of the teachers of the year that were chosen in each of the buildings and the educational service professionals and support professionals at each building that will be recommended to move on. With the teacher of the year, they move on to the county level and the state level. And then 2.9 is the district evaluation advisory committee, which the superintendent is removing from the agenda and will not be voted on this evening. 2.10 is the early childhood advisory council revision. 2.10. What's being removed? 2.9 is being removed from the agenda. It's the district evaluation advisory committee, and WNYEE4NJ. 2.11... Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. It's the wrong... I'm sorry, it's the wrong one. 2.9 is staying on the agenda. 2.10, the early childhood advisory council revision, is being removed from the agenda. I'm sorry for the... 2.11 is a club establishment of a youth-aligned student organization club at Memorial High School. Any questions on any items? Okay, moving on to operations. 3.1 is request for use of facilities. 3.2 is request for transportation. 3.3 is the revised nursing plan. 3.4 is the use... There are the approval to use police officers at their pre-K registration. 3.5 is the approval of the use of a company for... That offers bedside instruction for students on home instruction. And 3.6 is the vandalism and violence report, which Mr. Sanchez will give a presentation on next month's board meeting. Okay. Ms. Lozara, you're up.
Okay. 4.1 are the transportation placements of our out-of-district students in special ed. And 4.2...
Ms. Lozara, you want?
Loud enough? Everybody here is... 4.1 is transportation and placements of our special ed out-of-district students. 4.2 is request for permission for a waiver to expand the class because of the overages of registrations in the schools. Thank you.
Okay, for legal, we just have two items. 5.1 is the next board meeting, which will be March 11th here at 5:30. And also, 5.2 is a settlement with a vendor who we disputed work that they had done, they had done damage, and we came to a resolution with the vendor in order to pay the balance that we do then less the amount of the damage that they caused. And that was... The company is tabbed, the company, for... It was for electrical work at Memorial High School. I guess there's no need for... To review the items sixes, do that. And then, I just want to mention that on tonight's agenda, we'll be adding three policies for first reading. I'll have my secretary post them up on board docs to mark everybody to review, but there'll be a slight revision of policy, our bylaw 0164, that will require that the board have an English/Spanish translator present at all public board meetings. Board policy 0155 will be the establishment of board committees.
Wait, wait, so is this the first reading that we're doing?
This will be considered the first reading. There'll be no voting or action on it.
I'd actually like to go home and read over the policies first, and then we do the first reading at the next meeting. Well, that's why, you know, first week today, second meeting, you have to go down to the next meeting to report on it and make any changes that you change in the following year. All right. So then we're still going to have to read it twice again? Is there any modifications to any of them? Just thought that...
And the last one was revisions to policy 0171, which is the duties of the board president and vice president, and this will require the board president to have input on the agenda, the board agenda that's going on. Some basic changes on that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Kevin, so the only thing that's being withdrawn from the agenda is 210.
That's correct.
And what's being pulled from the agenda?
I'll go over that. I wanted to go over all the items that first.
That's fine.
Okay. So with all that being said, I'll try to do this in order the best I can. 1.2, or 1.1, the treasurer's... These are the items that are being removed from the consent agenda. 1.1, the treasurer's report. 1.2, approval of the minutes. 1.3, the paid bill list. 1.5, the OFAC report. 1.7 is the purchase of the software. 1.9 is the junior class dance. 1.11 is competitive contracting. 1.12 is the early childhood providers. We're a little out of order here. 1.8 is the spring athletic bid.
1.8 is being pulled?
Yes. And 1.12, early childhood providers, we mentioned that. 2.9, the district evaluation advisory committee. 3.1, use of facilities. 6.6, which is the CBE student. And 6.18, the bonus sick days. So they're the items that are being removed from the consent agenda. At this time, before the board votes, though, we'll open the floor for public comment on any of the items on the agenda.
We're going to go one by one, no?
Yeah, on those items. But first, before the board votes, the public has an opportunity to comment. We have our translator here this evening, if anybody needs translation services. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on any of the items on the board agenda that the board will be voting on this evening? Now is your chance to please come to the microphone and state your name, address for the record, and your concern. These are items just on the agenda. Okay, seeing no one? So let's vote, let's...
Okay, Adam, you can put 1.11 back into the consent if you'd like. Because I said what I wanted to say on...
Okay. So I'll remove that. So 1.11 will be back on the consent agenda then.
So 1.11 is now back on the agenda.
On the consent.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
I think we should just make up our minds.
Great. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Did they say 6.6 is being pulled out?
Yes.
She just... She's abstaining. Yes. She's abstaining.
Okay. With... All right, so let's vote on the consent agenda at this time, as modified, with all those things taken out, and with the one item being withdrawn by the superintendent, that was 2.10, I believe. So with that in mind, may I have a motion to accept the modified consent agenda? Motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parkinson, seconded by trustee Pizzatelli. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll start voting on... I'll try to do it in order. Okay, item 1.1, the treasurer's report, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Mejia, seconded by trustee Gonzalez. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Abstain.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Item 1.2, approval of the minutes, may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Acosta, seconded by trustee Gonzalez. Rocco, please.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Abstain.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Abstain.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Abstain.
Trustee Portillo?
Abstain.
President Rotis?
Yes.
The motion passes. 1.3 is the paid bill list. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Acosta, seconded by trustee Pizzatelli. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Abstain.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Abstain.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Abstain.
The motion passes. 1.5, which is the OFAC report, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parkinson, seconded by trustee Mejia. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
No.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
No.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Abstain.
The motion passes. 1.5, which is the OFAC report, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parkinson, seconded by trustee Mejia. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
No.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
No.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, next one, please. 1.7, the purchase of software. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Acosta, seconded by trustee Mejia. Rocco, please.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
The motion passes. 1.9, the junior class dance. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Which one are we voting on? Not 1.8?
I'm sorry, I skipped 1.8.
That's fine.
I'll do 1.8 next, I'm sorry. 1.9, and we had the motion by Vice President Parkinson, seconded by trustee Mejia. Mejia, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion by trustee Parkinson, seconded by trustee Mejia. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Hold on a second.
This is the junior class dance.
Yeah, this is...
That's the cruise.
Don't go...
If you say yes, then they'll go on the boat.
They're going to own the boat?
They're going to go on it. They're going to say?
No.
Okay. This is the... On the junior class dance, the boat.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
No.
Trustee Mejia?
No.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Abstain.
President Rotis? The vote is four... The vote is four yeses, three no's, one abstention. So this is the spread.
Yes.
The vote is yes, the motion passes.
It's on the vote.
Okay, 1.8 is the spring athletic bid. May I have a motion? May I have a motion for the spring athletic bid?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Mejia, seconded by trustee Pizzatelli. Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis? This is the spring athletic bid.
No.
The motion passes. Two point nine.
We're not doing one point twelve?
I'm sorry?
One point twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, early childhood providers. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Parkinson and seconded by Mejia.
Rocco?
Trustee Acosta?
No.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Abstain.
The motion passes. Now we're on to two point nine, which is the District Evaluation Advisory Committee. Or... Two point nine, two point? Two point ten is removed, okay, that's right, two. Two point nine we're voting on, that's right, two point nine we're voting on. So, two point nine, which is the District Evaluation Advisory Committee, may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Mejia, seconded by trustee Piscatelli. Rocco, please.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Abstain.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Abstain.
The motion passes. Three point one is the use of facilities, may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Mejia, seconded by trustee Gonzalez. Rocco, please.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Abstain.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo? Trustee Portillo?
I'm sorry, which one?
Uh, use of facilities?
Three point one?
Yes.
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
Two more, I believe. Six point six is the CBE student?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parkinson, second by trustee Mejia.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Abstain.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
And the last one, I believe, is six point eighteen is the bonus sick days. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Trust, trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
No.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis? This is the bonus sick days.
No.
The motion passes. I believe that was all of them. Ready? Did I skip any?
That's good.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment on matters of general public concern. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board, this is your opportunity. And according to West New York Bylaw, the zero one six seven public participation in board meetings stopped in April twenty-second, two thousand nine, which participants shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And as I mentioned before, we have a translator present for anyone who needs that service. Going once?
Going twice?
Okay, moving on. Number comments.
Number comments?
Can I have the floor, please, Mr. President?
Yes, you may, trustee Mejia.
I just want to start off by saying, thank you for everyone to be here again. I know it's pretty late, but, you know, this shows that you guys still care about the school district students, and most importantly, about the community here. So just thank you for being here. Secondly, I just want to also give some shout-outs and thanks to, again, the athletic department for their wonderful event that they had on January thirty-first with their championship, as well as the arts department, Mr. Osnowitz, again, back to the coaches, Mr. Burks, Mr. McCoy, Lopez, even Mr. Barker, I know he was part of the athletic department at some point, as well as Ms. Rita Mendez, I'm not sure if she's here right now, but for her presentation today. Ms. Kohane, and again, to Mr. Fauta for your leadership role. I think that's something you'll definitely merit and be proud of, and that's something especially to be proud of from the board. So I want to say thank you, Mr. Fauta, for your hard work and your leadership. So thank you for everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a comment and a question. At the January reorganization meeting, we passed a resolution setting a meeting schedule for this year. The February meeting was supposed to happen last week. It was adjourned until tonight with no prior notice to the board and no explanation given. And I would like to know why.
A couple of board members said they could not make it to the meeting, and it was a good amount of them. So I reached out to the superintendent and I had moved to a later date.
How many could not make it?
Quite a few.
Well, would there have been enough for a quorum?
I believe not.
Well, how many? How many could not make it?
Not enough for a quorum.
Well, what's the number? Maybe you could tell us the names of the people who couldn't make it.
I don't, I, I just, I said not enough for a quorum, and I think that's twice.
I, I don't think so, because I think it's a reasonable question.
And I gave you an answer, was it Palermo, was it Palermo, trustee Palermo, I'm sorry?
You, you didn't give me an answer.
I said not enough.
You gave me an evasive answer.
Not enough for a quorum.
The resolution that we passed is supposed to mean something. And it's not supposed to be changed for arbitrary reasons.
In point of fact, the president has the authority to change the board meeting.
Under very limited circumstances, only if there's no quorum.
Not true.
Yes, it is. Isn't that one about bylaws?
Yes.
Yes.
There has to be reason. There has to be good cause according to our bylaw.
Not enough board members would be able, anybody to make it to the meeting.
I think Ms. Palermo's question is which board members, because you didn't consult myself or Ms. Palermo. As a, as a courtesy, Mr. Rotis, it'd be nice of you...
And as a courtesy, I said that it's not enough for, not enough for a quorum. Any, any, any other board member comments?
I have one. Can we move on?
Yes, any, any other board member comments?
Yes. Superintendent, I know we discussed this by phone about two weeks ago when the weather started becoming unpredictable. But other, and I know we discussed, other parents have also brought up the possibility of perhaps we can implement delayed school openings?
Yes. The thing with the delayed school openings, we have to rehearse it in good weather, because Union City, myself, both Bergen, haven't done that because of the situation with the social economic status of our, our working parents to have a delayed opening. You know, we'd have to rehearse it to get, get feedback to see if we'd do it.
Ah, okay.
Because working with Union City was very similar to us. The former superintendent and the existing superintendent, we, we haven't made much success because of the situation with our parents. But talking to North Bergen, they did rehearse it, and they made feedback and made the decision. So, once the weather gets better, we can do something like that.
Okay.
And rehearse it to see if, because it would be a valuable asset. But we had the same time, we don't want the students showing up at eight o'clock with a delayed opening, we'd be in a bigger jam. So rehearsal, I plan to do and get the feedback and make the final decision.
Okay, so perhaps we can do this in the spring or summer?
Yes, once the weather gets a little better, we could, you know, it's no problem, we still get the whole school day in. We can do a couple, and just get the criteria and then see how it looks out.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Any other board member comments? Just want to say a couple of words. I also want to congratulate the track team, Mr. Lopez, who I hear, you know, he's, he's done a great job with the track team for the last couple of years. He's been, I believe, part of our school district for over maybe twenty years now. Is that correct?
He's, he's the winningest track coach in Hudson County. He was coaching a year maybe about a dozen times. He's brought numerous county championships. He's, he's a whole thing.
We're, we're very lucky to have him as a coach. We're lucky to, we're lucky to have, you know, the teachers that we have now and the administrators. And just also wanted to thank Mr. Cook, who, he's not here anymore, for making an appearance. Carrie Kohane, that was a fantastic fashion show. It was, it was very nice. I mean, I definitely commend her for putting together such a nice event in such a little bit of time. And I strongly encourage other staff members to, you know, to utilize our facilities for events like this, creative events like this.